Hi, and welcome to the September seventeenth regularly school board meeting. We do we have, I'll call this to order, sorry, I'm off my game today, I apologize in advance for all the mistakes I'm going to make this evening. So we have a pledge.
Yes, we do.
All right, hello, with me this evening is Jackson Dorn. While Jackson is currently a freshman at Co Brown, he's here as a representative of our BMS Spring Athletic Program. Jackson is a tremendous athlete regularly, but last spring he represented BMS like a superstar. Jackson smashed quite a few records in his spring track season. But what sets him apart from some other Bulldogs were a few important wins that got him qualified for regional and even national meets. Jackson qualified for the 2024 Southeast League Championship. He came in first in both the 400 meter, 200 meter, and the long jump, setting middle school records for both. Then he competed in the USA Track and Field Junior Olympic Open Meet in Fitchburg, Massachusetts, where he placed first in the 400 meter and the 100 meter, second in the 200 meter, and the third in long jump. His final competition was in Manhattan, where he won the 400 meter, which qualified him for the National Championship in Texas, which was held at Texas A&amp;M. Unfortunately, he suffered an injury and was unable to compete, but what an amazing accomplishment it was for him to make it this far. Nevertheless, his accomplishments were pretty tremendous. We're excited to watch for his accomplishments at Co Brown because once a Bulldog, always a Bulldog. So, Jackson?
I pledge allegiance. Sorry, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, very impressive resume you already have as a freshman in high school, so we can't wait to hear more about you. And as you learn tonight, we have high school representatives, so keep that in mind, we'd love to see you again. Thank you for your time, and I'm sure those track coaches at Co Brown will be very excited to have you.
Any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to suggest that we move Bridget's report to right after the first public comment.
Please, so transportation update is going to be number seven?
Yes, please.
Accept an emotion to accept the agenda as amended?
Or make that motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of the minutes? Sorry, was that so moved?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second? Minutes, did anyone have any? Was I, was that the one that I missed?
Oh, it's just the tour? And yes, I was there, sorry. I was at the tour. Sorry, I know that there's one that I'm supposed to say I abstained, I was like sticking on that, we already went through that one, right?
Okay, all right, so can I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I do not see Mr. Cole Anatucci.
I do not either.
If you reserve the right to have him speak if he still hears.
Yeah.
Public comment? Anyone online? All right, so, look at that, you're up like that.
Thank you for accommodating me, I really do appreciate it.
So we wanted to do a follow-up sooner rather than later about some of the progress that we've made with transportation and really provide the board with a transparent update of where things are just about three weeks into the school year. I'm not sure I need to go through the whole report, but I'm happy to share, you know, there have been some really lovely successes. The start of the school day is going well at all three schools, which is notable because last year there was a wide window at the elementary school that was causing some stress for the educators who were ready to start the school day and having to manage some latecomers. So, so we're pleased to report that that has shown some progress. But we are still seeing some inconsistencies in the afternoon with dismissal at the elementary school and at the ECLC. The elementary school, as you are all aware, are the folks that get hardest with the discrepancies in terms of the buses showing up anywhere from 2:55 until sometimes 3:40, which is a very wide range of time, commonly in other districts and other schools. You know, there's maybe a 10-minute window at the most where buses arrive, kids get on them, and they are quickly escorted off campus and routes are started. I have to commend the whole district, right, staff and students and families. But at, at the elementary school, there, there are so many core staff that are working so diligently to kind of make up for the time that sometimes is lost at the delay of buses arriving in terms of turning kids around. We're trying to get them lined up and checked off and onto the buses as quickly as possible in order to make up some of that time and be as efficient as possible. You have two new staff members, Katie, who is a steam teacher, and Christie, who is a reading specialist, who have afternoon dismissal duty, and they've been outstanding at assisting with that process, and I just really would like to commend them for that. So I think the, the highlight that I wanted you guys to really see is, is the chart to say that that dismissal snapshot for the week of the third really shows you a couple of things. It shows you that vast window that we have in terms of what time buses are arriving at the elementary school. And then it also shows you that the routes are taking longer than we expect per our contract. So our contract states that we expect routes to be less than 60 minutes, and we are not hitting that target period. And I think that as a district, we're being understanding and patient, but in a lot of ways, it's a business, and we've set an expectation, and we're really working hard to do right by kids and by families. And some of our kids and our littlest learners aren't getting home until close to five o'clock at night. And I know as a mom, that's really challenging to manage. And some of them are falling asleep on the ride home, which is understandable, so it's, it's tricky. So we had a primary conversation with the bus company after our board meeting in August to set some expectations, and Deanna and I have partnered to continue to hold some accountability. And tomorrow we have a meeting at 10 o'clock with Jennifer Nolan, who is the Northern New England General Manager, to see if we can continue to chip away at this. The other thing that arose late last week is that we had a driver that was sick, and so we had some sub-coverage, and then we didn't have enough coverage so that yesterday afternoon, there was a middle school bus that was not able to pick up kids on the purple route at dismissal time. And so we had to let families know that kids could stay at school until the late bus or if families wanted to pick kids up, which then took time away for admin and other educators to take care of kids from 2:55 until, or 2:15 until 2:55. So I'm happy to answer questions that folks might have, and if I've missed anything that would be helpful for you to know or I can inquire about.
I had one question about communication only, and please know, it's only because I don't, oh, it's only because I saw something, and I hate to say that, I saw something on social media, but I did, so I just want to know if this, if it's accurate. So are we still utilizing the text feature for notification? Okay.
Well, so.
For when there's it, even if, even if like my child isn't on the bus, well, I get, because I used to get all them no matter what.
So what we're working on doing is establishing better communication that doesn't always have to be district-wide or building-wide. And so yesterday was not the smoothest rollout of communication, and part of that is because we were peeling back the onion a little bit as we go through this, right? Because I happen to, because now that it, with this role, I'm able to really dig into it, and I sort of think, okay, we're there, and then I kind of uncover a little bit more that needs to be rebuilt. And so what we discovered yesterday is we don't have a comprehensive list of who is on what bus from the bus company that allows us to upload that into Messenger.
Okay, yep.
To then be able to just send a message to the purple bus across all three schools from the district level. And so that was a little bit of the scramble yesterday that is being resolved as we speak. So the intention is, yes, you would get a text message that says, please check your email, but not necessarily, the hope is that the whole district wouldn't have to get that email. It would be targeted to folks that are truly impacted.
Thank you for looking into that.
Yes, absolutely.
So we're sending a text to tell them to check their email and not just texting the information?
It would be both.
It depends on the information because the text characters are limited in school Messenger. If you can, if you can communicate the change in a text, then we will absolutely do that.
Do you know what, is it like a long char, like what, what do they offer?
I think it's 2:50.
I'm surprised we do not have those bus lists, though, like on the first day of school, how do you, what buses, to put the little people on.
I am surprised as well.
We are also surprised.
Yeah, I think that we are, I am trying to understand how routes are created, and I am concerned that we are creating, we are just carrying routes from last year to this year. Whereas what I think our expectations should be and typically are is that when our admin assistants at each building hand, email our student information that tells you who's enrolled for the upcoming school year. My experience has always been that that information is how we create new routes. So then we know every kid in the district has a bus and has a bus stop and has a time, and then that's uploaded into the SIS system prior to the start of the school year. And then it's very easy to do that communication, but I don't know that that's how routes are developed always, and so that's kind of what we're digging into as we peel back.
We're finding that we're having to hold the bus company accountable to what built language in the contract says, as opposed to, oh, we don't have clear, full information in whatever sliver we're talking about. And then I think historically, it has fallen on administrative assistants in each particular building to pull that apart. And over the last 10 years or so, those roles have become more complex, and it, the bus company needs to provide it, is the short of the long of that.
Is it, so is Ginger our point of contact, who then also is a driver?
So there's really three contacts, so Ginger is our route coordinator, but then there are two folks, Tom and Kelly, who I've really been in contact with all three of them. And it's, so that's another piece is who, who's in charge of what? So that we're, we're communicating the right information to the right folks.
Props to her because I know whenever there's a shortage, she's driving all the buses and everything that you can't do. Can't do it all.
Absolutely, without a doubt. And then just, you know, we are still at seven buses when we should be at nine.
And that's part of the complication, right? We're trying to be and have always been very flexible and gracious because they also are understaffed, but there has to be some level of expectation and accountability here because our families have been more than gracious for too many years, and we can't blame it on COVID any longer. So it's time to recalibrate the expectations and move forward.
And I'm not sure that other districts under the umbrella are short, aren't fully staffed.
Oh, other districts under SDA?
Yeah, or under, I guess it's SDA and Dale.
I don't think Dale really exists, I think it's just SDA. We just keep holding on.
I think that's fair.
Provider bus, and hasn't been the provider bus for a decade, you know.
So that when staff absence, when, when driver absences happened, it hits us much differently than it hits other school districts, I think.
They have dedicated drivers where our people who are coordinating, like Tom, Kelly, Ginger, then our substitute drivers as well. So we're feeling this additional squeeze or pinch, if you will, and we're just not really graciously accepting that any longer.
I wonder if we could reach out to other districts and find out if that is the case, that they have all their drivers? Because I think then that is extra ammunition in our negotiations to them, say, wait, why are we always the district you're shorting?
I've actually asked that question of Tom and Kelly, and that is primarily the information they provided me. So I've asked them directly because I know which districts they're servicing. And so I can give you more accurate information because I don't have it in front of me, but I do have an email that has that information I could get back to you with.
Are they still on target to bring on a new driver?
So they were able to bring on the van driver who started, but it apparently, so I didn't receive communication. They did not provide updates about that, and then I reached out once and didn't hear back. And then I followed up another time and heard about the van driver being moved, moved into the position, but didn't hear about the bus driver, so I had to reach out a third time. And that is when I finally found out that that CDL driver has opted not to move forward in the process. But it took almost two weeks for me to get a response to that inquiry.
I think I speak for the board, but people can correct me. I think when you meet with them, let them know that the board is incredibly frustrated and that this will be taken into consideration in negotiations for upcoming contracts. This is unacceptable, that this is going on years and years and years, and that it just can't be tolerated.
There's also some language in our contract that, you know, both sides agree that if you're not running a bus, we're clearly not going to be charged for that bus, but there's additional language in there around when you combine routes or you're not complying with the hour length, that there would also be some monetary compensation back to the district. We've never held them to that, but that language is in there. In addition to that, every time we have to do something like not run whatever color route out of the middle school, you know, you're impacting, and we're, we probably will be in a position of needing to compensate. You know, if administrators can't fulfill that duty last minute because they are in other meetings, then we're having to ask staff members to stay after contracted hours because we have a whole bus full of kiddos who need to be monitored, we can't just tell them to stay in the foyer, right? So I'm just, you know, we're all very concerned about how we're going to move forward in the best manner.
Well, and perhaps that's why, because we've been gracious in not holding them to that part of the language, we are the district that's being shorted, and so maybe we should start. I would actually recommend that we start.
Yes, and I couldn't agree with you more. I think we have been the nice district for maybe a little too long. So, and you know, we're certainly willing to be flexible and nice, of course, but when it's impacting.
And these are extreme.
Those are extreme times on a bus.
Like five to 10 minutes, I can understand, 20-minute difference over an hour, I, no, so.
We have some work to do, but Bridget has been spending, well, I would say, close to all of her time in these first few weeks on transportation. So I know I am grateful for the time and energy that she has spent, and I, and the principals as well, because otherwise, it would be the three building principals and myself trying to, you know, come up with a plan and talking and detracting from that time, so.
We'll get there.
We'll get there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I guess it's up to you.
All right, so superintendent report, and of course, every time you write these things and submit them for publication the previous week, it's, you know, things change, so I will go through to the best of my ability and update as I go. So hiring and personnel, we were currently staffed when I wrote this last week. We did have a resignation between that time and today, so we do have a paraprofessional position posted currently for the elementary school. They were, they were able at this point to shift some things around and provide appropriate coverage, but that is currently an open position. And then as I reported out here, we do have a couple of medical and personal type leave situations going on that we're managing. Building highlights, you all got to see the wonderful shape that our buildings are in. So I wanted to just formally thank Joe Williams and his entire team, including Brian Doty or his assistant, the whole facility committee group, and the work that they've done to get our buildings open. I know we say this every year, but it is always astounding to me that we go from piles of stuff and furniture and scratched floors to absolute beautiful spaces by the time we open. We did have a facilities committee meeting just yesterday, there is quite a bit that we discussed. So Joe will do a full facilities report at the upcoming meeting to share out all that information that was done in that committee. And then we, Joe and I will get together to recommend, prioritize how we want to tackle each of those items. Some are smaller ticketed items, some are quite large, like the window repair jobs at the middle school. You would expect those are massive banks of windows, so you would think that would clearly be a much larger ticket item there. Nothing structurally unsafe, so we'll come up with a propose on how we think we can partially absorb it in the current budget and what we need to propose and potential capital reserve from there. In the first couple of weeks of school, I've been able to walk through, visit classrooms, buildings. I went to the ECLC open house, and Laura and Tracy do an amazing job just meticulously planning for the littles to come in. So everybody was smiling and happy and ready to go. I also joined the preschool teams' first critical team time as part of their guiding coalition work. And it was just really fantastic to hear the data-driven discussions and the tight norms and revisiting what are our norms. And, you know, they take a power of possibilities approach, so just always doing that positive mindset as opposed to, you know, oh, this is a negative and how can we address it? So it was great to see how tight and well-managed and how student-focused that meeting was, especially given that it was in the first week and a half of school. You know, you wouldn't think with the littles, you'd have a ton of data to really look at yet, but they are already hitting the ground running, so that was exciting to see. That the teams in that building have had more, actually a year plus more time with that type of tight data-driven discussion. So it was great to see that their efforts come to fruition so early in the, in the year. BES, we know that, we already looked and talked about the entryway. It looks amazing, and just to, wanted to formally thank Melissa Moran for doing that work for us and helping us bring the mission, the vision, the portrait of a learner, essential skills together into a nice, creative.
Can we get something formally sent to Melissa thanking her for that work?
Well, we're thanking her, but we also paid her for that work.
Okay.
Right.
She did beautiful work.
Yes.
You know, we didn't thank the guys who paved the driveway formally, so I appreciate the artistry and everything that went into it, but it's gorgeous.
It is gorgeous. In addition, as you would expect, some of our more diverse learners who need the most support have the most difficult time transitioning into a new school year. So it was also very wonderful from a academic, social, emotional, and just procedural perspective for me to see staff handling with very intentional plans in mind some of these kiddos who are still struggling to settle. And one of the things that we often do is we run over to help when we see a struggle, and it was great to see that staff on the whole understands that that's not always the best practice. You don't know that child's plan, you know, your presence could actually exacerbate the situation. And I, I just followed up with a situation that I happened to see that day and with some sort of new staff members to say, okay, I want to make sure that I didn't upset or offend you by the fact that I just sort of looked and watched and waited for you to call me over if you needed me, but I just kept walking, doing my walkthroughs, and they were like, oh, my gosh, no, thank you, because that's what we should do. And so it was a nice reminder to the people who were around, like, let the plans do they what they were intended to do, and don't interject, even though you, it appears as though a team is struggling and you want to help, it can be counterproductive sometimes. So it was great so early to see that those teams are running those in more intense behavioral plans and sticking to them, which we know then most often creates student success when we are, stick to our plans. BMS is continuing their work with MTSSB and starting to talk about some student and teacher language that we can support staff and students on to help promote, you know, the safest and most inclusive learning environment that we can. So a lot of conversation around, you know, pronoun use and things like that. So just giving reminders and those general sentiments of how to reframe your language, especially if, you know, you were trained 25 years ago, things have changed. It looks amazing. And just to, wanted to formally thank Melissa Morin for doing that work for us and helping us bring the mission, the vision, the portrait of a learner, essential skills together into a nice, creative.
Can we get something formally sent to Melissa thanking her for that work?
Well, we're thanking her, but we also paid her for that work.
Okay.
Right.
She did beautiful work.
Yes.
Like, you know, we didn't thank the guys who paved the driveway formally. So I appreciate the artistry and everything that went into it, but it's gorgeous.
It is gorgeous. In addition, as you would expect, some of our more diverse learners who need the most support have the most difficult time transitioning into a new school year. So it was also very wonderful from an academic, social, emotional, and just procedural perspective for me to see staff handling with very intentional plans in mind some of these kiddos who are still struggling to settle. And one of the things that we often do is we run over to help when we see a struggle. And it was great to see that staff on the whole understands that that's not always the best practice. You don't know that child's plan. You know, your presence could actually exacerbate the situation. And I, I just followed up with a situation that I happened to see that day and with some sort of new staff members to say, okay, I want to make sure that I didn't upset or offend you by the fact that I just sort of looked and watched and waited for you to call me over if you needed me, but I just kept walking, doing my walkthroughs. And they were like, oh, my gosh, no, thank you, because that's what we should do. And so it was a nice reminder to the people who were around, like let the plans do what they were intended to do and don't interject even though you, it appears as though a team is struggling and you want to help, it can be counterproductive sometimes. So it was great so early to see that those teams are running those in more intense behavioral plans and sticking to them, which we know then most often creates student success when we are, stick to our plans. BMS is continuing their work with MTSSB and starting to talk about student and teacher language that we can support staff and students on to help promote, you know, the safest and most inclusive learning environment that we can. So a lot of conversation around, you know, pronoun use and things like that. So just giving reminders and those general sentiments of how to reframe your language, especially if, you know, you were trained 25 years ago, things have changed considerably. And, you know, it's not about anybody's opinions. It's just about making the widest range of people in your classroom and in your building as a whole feel as included and comfortable as you can. So there's a lot of great conversation happening around those topics as well. All right, so jumping to financial, our 2324 audit was its usual success. Vicki and Jody put forth the meticulous effort and expertise that is required for that type of situation. We did have a couple of minor suggestions, corrections around immediate deposit of funds to principals' accounts. We've had this before and it's a little slap on the hand. We don't love it, but in, there's times where it's just not avoidable because you, you know, it's over a long weekend or it's, you know, over a vacation week or a teacher tucks it in their desk because they're trying to, you know, oh, I'm gonna, don't want that in sight. And then they inadvertently forget about it, you know. So there's a variety of kind of innocent reasons why that happens. And really, the only way to, it's really tighten it up is to be more mindful of when we ask for those monies to be duly collected. So that we're not collecting them when it then, you know, renders the administrative assistance ability to get it over to this office to have it be deposited almost impossible. So nothing major there. So our, our amount reserved for our 2.5% tax rate retention was 565,584. And then the unassigned balance from last fiscal year going back to taxpayers is 393,777. Alrighty, so a few committee updates. I'm not going to talk a lot about policy because we're going to talk about these policies when we get later in the agenda. But we did, like we had said at the previous meeting, take all the Title IX policies that you all graciously emergency authorized so we could be in federal compliance at a previous meeting. And we brought them back to committee for review. So those are on tonight as well to just give them their sort of just due process and having a, since they didn't have a first and a second read, they will come back forward again, having been to committee. The fall policy update was supposed to be sent out last Friday from New Hampshire School Boards Association. It didn't quite hit that mark, but I did attend a training today. Carrie, you around there as well?
Yes.
Yep. And it was a nice overview. So we also got from one of our legal firms a similar. So there's sort of two pieces. There, there's the legislative sort of outcomes and review of what happened, you know, what bills were signed and all that from the summer. And then there's the next layer of that, which is, so out of those legislative changes, what then needs to either amend current policy or create new policy? So that's the sort of.
And when they go in effect and.
And when they go in effect. So that's that second layer of where we are now. There's one included in there tonight, which is IGEE. So we are hopeful we'll get that information pretty quickly. So we, as a policy committee, aren't trying to recreate the wheel. But there are quite a few sort of two-step legislative pieces where it's, well, this piece of it is due by, you know, October 1, but the next piece of it isn't due until July of 2025. So we'll have to be very meticulous as a policy committee as we go through to comply with all those legislative changes. Wellness committee hasn't met yet this year. They will convene during the months of November, January, and March. But there is no shortage of great things going on in the area of wellness. BMS is planning a wellness day. Owl's Nest, of course, sees all kinds of outdoor learning opportunities there. That's actually one of the things we talked about in facilities committee yesterday is the need to do some tree work as a result of last April's ice and snow damage. And we have quite a bit of large tree property maintenance that needs to be done. So that is an additional line that may be its own line or may go elsewhere in the budget that Joe and I need to talk through. We did have a lightning strike out here last year. And, you know, our maintenance and facilities crew, custodial crews just are not equipped to be taking down some of these trees that are that tall. It's just not safe. So we need to create a plan for that as well. And BES continues with its jumping on the outdoor learning train, if you will, and also continuing their recess initiatives around really coaching students around, you know, what can you do and how do you play those games safely in a group? And all those pieces during recess. Because again, we can't expect behaviors if we don't model and teach them. So we are excited about what's going on in the area of wellness. High school contracts. I have regrouped with superintendents from both Oyster River and Dover because we did some of that lake work last year. So I just haven't had time yet since those conversations to pull those thoughts together to then get it out to the board members that are on those respective committees. So that information is forthcoming because we need to get those out on warrants for the upcoming budget cycle. Teacher contract, you know, as we all know, that's a confidential process. So not much I can say about that other than we've convened three times to date. We've committed to a meeting schedule. Other than a couple of exceptions, our goal is to meet weekly because we really want to get some steam and, you know, going behind this so we can get it done as quickly but as thoroughly as possible. And we also agreed upon and signed ground rules as part of that process. And Portrait of a Learner, so came out of me ask. As you all know, Elizabeth Town has been really spearheading that work. And we have now a plan to create the defining and rubrics of what the essential, essential skills, now that we have identified those characteristics and like, what does that mean? Right? When you say the word respect and.
Growth mindset.
It could mean a variety of things to different people. So that is getting ready to happen. Small groups will be breaking out every grade level and stakeholder represented and starting that work on October 10th and 11th, which is early release and then a workshop day. And let's see, town collaboration. The last meeting was Monday, the 26th. Next meeting is coming up on October 3rd. The focus has been on health coverage as well as where school and town can collaborate and share vendors and contracts with the end result, hopefully obviously being an overall cost savings to community members. So we'll keep reporting out on that. The next whole page is sort of dates and trainings that are occurring. So I don't think I will read through all of those. Nobody needs those.
I enjoy being read to.
You do not enjoy being read to. So none of us should. So I will continue to, unless you're a three-year-old, right? And you're getting your read to at night.
It's a good story.
If it's a good, yeah. So what I'll try to do in my reports.
Bedtime story material.
What I'll do in my reports each time is just keep that last page so that if there are events that you all, you know, just so you're aware of what's upcoming. So if you want to attend, you can. And then also there's a couple of thank yous in there that are around other sort of requirements and trainings, like Sergeant Barber was here for active shooter training and drills on September 10th. And that's an area that, you know, it was tough to talk about. And our staff has really grown in this area in respect to their kind of ability to, to really tackle this tough stuff and hear it and absorb it and feel more confident with what we need to do for our students moving forward. So I feel really good about the work that we're doing in that area. Like we didn't have enough going on. I just found out from the New Hampshire Retirement System that we are due for an audit. So, you know, throw one more thing on the plate that has to be done prior to the January hearing. There will obviously be no financial impact with that per se. But we haven't been audited since April of 2017. So I did have a follow-up conversation with New Hampshire Retirement System and gave Vicki all of that information.
Does that actually have to happen before the budget or can it happen later?
Well, they have deadlines. And so they told me that they are going to initiate the email conversation with Vicki within the next week. And as soon as they ask for information, they expect it within three days. They're only giving a three-day turnaround. They said if you have an exception, like, oh, hey, my payroll is due, you can certainly propose a different date. But they have found that there are many districts across the state that just put this audit because there is no financial or real compliance issue attached to it. And so it goes to the bottom of their list. And then it doesn't allow these folks to be compliant and get their jobs done. So Vicki wasn't concerned. She's obviously been here long enough that she's done this for many years. So we're just anticipating in the next couple of weeks that that will happen. They do it all through a desk audit now. They don't come out physically like they used to. And I was so surprised to hear that this was not a result of COVID. So this was actually a procedural change that they started prior to COVID. And they, you know, they send encrypted emails so everybody's information is secure. They pull 15 current members from that fiscal year that they're auditing, which would be 2022, 23. And they just go through, you know, the percentages and their payroll and whether everything was done appropriately. So it's really not a huge undertaking. She just has to pull it out of our payroll system. So it's not massive. It's just one more thing to check the box and comply with. So I think the only other major thing to share is actually two other major things. We are updating our MOU with the police department and they are supporting some of our needed changes with reunification. Having a meeting with the folks who oversee N68 Hours of Hunger because they are losing their space. So we are going to see if we're able to support them in any way. Elizabeth's going to join me in that conversation because I think the only place we potentially have space is at the middle school. They've already reached out to some of the town departments and facilities and nobody else at this point can accommodate them. So we'll see what we can do. They're also reaching out to the person who bought the space to see if continuing is a possibility. I don't know where they landed with that so far. So we're hoping to be able to find that because we do have quite a space for that. We have quite a few families who do benefit from that. And we.
Do you have a rough idea of how many families benefit by that?
It varies every year. I would say at the ECLC, there's historically, off the top of my head, we would probably get 12 to 20 bags. As students get older, they are more hesitant to pick that up, unfortunately, even though we've tried a variety of things of, you know, backpacks and ways to send it home. So what would you say we've had there in the last year or so?
Since I've been, probably between four and eight.
Yeah. Yes, and the elementary is more comparable to the ECLC numbers, probably more like, you know, 10 to 20 bags or so. So, you know, but it does provide enough food, as is indicated in the name, to have meals from the time a child gets their school lunch on a Friday until they would potentially get their school breakfast on a Monday morning. So it, you know, offsets those weekend meals. So hopefully we will be able to figure something out there. And then on October 10th and 11th, the Community Action Partnership out of Dover and Community Partners reached out to me to extend grant funds that it will be expiring soon. And they still had money to do youth mental health first aid training, which I think, given as often as we've talked about the emotional and behavioral struggles of our students over the past handful of years, that this will be a very valuable training for our staff to have. The training itself is for ages 12 to 18. But if you talk to any counselor in the area right now, they would tell you that all educators, preschool through college that have this knowledge so that you can catch those signs early and make some referrals and suggestions to your school counselors and school psychologists on how we can support families. So the majority of our staff will be participating in that on those two days. So that is a, a big undertaking. There's a whole bunch of modules and a test to take. But I think you get, you're certified. It's not like you have to pass this, you know, with 100%, but it, it will be good information for our staff collectively to have around how we look at youth mental health moving forward. So, yeah. Oh, yeah, it is a great, the people who have been through it are very happy with the content and the trainers. And they bring, they bring it all to us so we can receive information and not be the ones presenting for a change. So. Questions? I did not report on progress toward district goals at this point because we don't have our beginning of year data yet. And I figured I would wait till we had a little more of a meaty topic there.
Thank you, Deanna.
You're welcome.
Did anybody have any questions or anything?
Do we, do we currently have any non-certified teachers on staff right now?
So if they don't currently hold certification, then they, they have a site-based learning plan. So they are able to serve as an educator. We don't have anybody not in a plan of sorts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the selection of SBA BC members.
So we reached out to the three people who have been our members for the past handful of years. All three would like to be considered again. And then in addition, so that would be Dave, Toddy, Sarah Gould, and Scott Chase. And then in addition to those three, we had two other folks reach out, saying they were interested as well. So you have the, the emails of those folks in your packet. Hannah Minor was the fourth. I don't, they didn't, I don't have the particular order in which they came in, but just in your packet, Hannah Minor is the fourth. And then Scott Ramsey, the fifth person. And our SBA BC for quite a few years has been three members. So to have a five-member committee, I think, is great if we are planning on having them all participate.
Oh, so moved. I'll make that motion.
I'll make, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
So what I'll do now that we know who they are is one other adjustment that we've made or changed from previous years is we have a separate schedule timeline for this, these committee members. So some of them already have it because when they expressed interest, they had some questions and we already shared it. So we will encourage them to attend right out of the gate in our initial presentation at our second October meeting and give them the same info that we all have in front of us as we have those discussions and make decisions moving forward.
And obviously, we'd love to have them in person, but they can also walk in virtually. All right. School Board Delegate Assembly.
So a few people had asked about this. So I figured we probably should just put it on the agenda and make some decisions. So are there members interested in attending? And second to that, or in addition to that, I should say, do you, as a board, have topics that you wanted to bring forward as part of the NHSBA Delegate Assembly?
So I'm interested in going. I've gone the last four years, three years? I actually don't remember, but I've been many, many, many times. I would say I don't have anything that I would want to bring up as potential topics because of course, when, for those who haven't been, you're going there to represent topics that would apply to New Hampshire school boards across the entire state. It's not necessarily just things that would, that would apply just, just to us and how we would want New Hampshire School Boards Association to represent us as they represent us during those discussions up at the State House. So I don't have anything at this moment, but that's not saying that we wouldn't and wouldn't want to discuss them. So other schools have brought things up before that then the delegate members, there's one voting member and then one that goes as a, like, emergency voting member that you can, you, you have discussions about it. But again, it's, it's something that's supposed to apply at state. So I don't have anything, but that's not saying that we, as a board of five, can't discuss an issue that we believe is important. Or from reading the packet that they provide us that's already actually published, we, you would have, you could give the voting member that attends as well as the emergency voting member that also attends, are what, how you would like us to vote for Barrington, for our, our representative seat. An example of the past was how we wanted NHSBA to have a relationship with NSBA, National School Boards Association. And that relationship was one thing that did come to vote and was discussed at the time before developing a new relationship. a new relationship with a different association nationally. So, this is an example.
We did receive the proposed resolutions from them. So, it might be worth reading them over before.
Yes. Yeah. So, we definitely would have to read them over. And some of the things don't apply, but they still, what I appreciate about the assembly is that, so, for example, there were some in the past I've read that were really exclusive to high schools. We don't have any, but they still allowed everyone there that there were other school boards that did not have high schools, and they wanted also to hear from us as well. And I really appreciated that we were included in the discussion, even though it doesn't technically apply to us in any way, but I appreciated it. So.
Jason, do you still have that pulled up? Does it have the date of the assembly?
It's October 19th, from 10:30 to 2:00.
Is there anybody else that wants to go that I should sign up to attend to that?
I'm, I'm comfortable with Carrie. I'm comfortable with Carrie being the primary delegate.
So, and then-
If there's an alternate that can go and-
Do you want me to put back on the October 1 agenda, once people have had a chance to read through the resolutions, to see if there's anything that you want to put forward as a board? Or, do you want to not-
Put forward, or, I mean, I would-
Or as, or supporting something that's already there?
Yes.
Not put forward something different necessarily. So, yes.
Would that help?
I think that, I think that would be good if, I think, I mean, because there, I don't know how many there are. I haven't read the packet yet. But it might be better to say, like, if there's, unless there, if you support all of them, then we don't, certainly don't have to discuss each item. This is not our policies. This is not, I think, if, if only if something really steps, like, stands out to you as something that you really disagree with as an association that we pay membership for, then, then definitely let me know or not, and we can discuss it, or, or we can, as a board collectively, just decide that our vote will be no. And again, an example of that was that the, the supporting of removing ourselves, our board, supported removing ourselves from National School Boards Association at the time that that happened. So, that's an example of one time that we did vote in the negative. So.
So, it sounds like, yes, I'll put on for the first a discussion to look at the NHSBA resolutions to determine if there are any that you want to either feel strongly one way or the other, to make sure you want your, that Barrington's voice gets heard at that assembly. All right.
All right. Dannon, up to you.
Good evening, Hannah. I gave up most of my speech, so, about the collaborative committee, which I think is working really well. I, I think we're getting some good information back and forth. It's really gonna be helpful for the community. One thing that just came in pretty recently is we're now going to be able to connect a trail to the parking lot from the trail around the new commons area. So, that should be useful, useful for elementary school. Be very handy for them to do some of their outdoor education. And there's progress being made with the collaborative committee on that, which, again, may influence some of the things that we're doing here in school. Our budget process is gonna begin, our preliminary budget should come out the 1st of October, be presented at our meeting on the 7th of October, and we'll maybe get a preview on the 3rd when we have our collaborative meeting. Our, our process can be a little different, just FYI. We're going to have most of the presentations, department head presentations will be made directly to the Advisory Budget Committee, and there won't be a, a corresponding presentation the next Monday to the, to the Select Board. But Select Board will then start working with, through the ABC. Just a different way of, of doing things this year. Take a look. We're not sure how it will work. We'll see. Let you know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. BMS is off to a great start. It's been a really smooth start to the year. So, happy to report that. Enrollment has changed since I submitted my report last week. So, we are down to 406 students. We had one student move out of the 6th grade. We're averaging 97% daily absence rate, and we have zero students who have been absent unexcused for five or more days, which is in line with the truancy policy. For MTSSA, students are completing their I-ready this week, and that will give our ELA and math teachers baseline data to inform instruction. It's also going to help us give a base for forming RTI groups. Trimester 1 RTI is going to focus on math, so all students will get some sort of intervention in math. It'll be based on the grade level standard that the majority of students need help with. And then math teachers at each grade level will give common formative assessments within that standard to really target what every student needs, and that might be extension for some students. So, that RTI will begin October 16th. MTSSB progress. Advisory teachers spent a lot of time with their students the first three weeks, just getting to know them, doing some, like, get-to-know-you projects, ready for open house tomorrow night, and really just trying to build that relationship. On September 10th, our MTSSB committee led a training to the rest of the staff based on the One Trusted Adult Program, and we got some really positive feedback on that. So, that was exciting. Enrichment began yesterday. So, last week, students got to choose their top three enrichment programs, just things that they were interested in to kind of give them a fun break throughout the day. So, that's up and running. Lots of people were out around the building, moving today, which is great. We have things like cribbage, archery, walking club, board games, quilting, stuff like that. And so, enrichment is gonna run through October 9th, and then we'll move into RTI. And our MTSSB committee members are piloting ripple journals with one advisory at each grade level. That's also based on the One Trusted Adult Program. So, I'm looking forward to getting feedback on how students are doing with that. And one mistake to correct, we're going to begin our Student of the Month Award at the end of October. The social-emotional learning theme for September is just getting to know your advisory. So, our first theme for social-emotional learning will be goal-setting in October. So, that's when we'll start our Student of the Month program. Progress towards school goals. This year, we had every content team create their own, create goals as, as a whole group. So, that was great. ELA is gonna focus on literary comprehension. The UA team is going to focus on supporting informational texts in their classes. They've got a really great plan to do some kind of before and after with goal-setting based on the content in their UA class. Math, really focused on I-ready. Social Studies is also looking at informational texts and citing evidence. Spanish is focusing on grammatical understanding and improving that. Special Ed is focusing on reading and how, that's, they've, it's kind of a meaty goal, but it's a good one. 80% of Special Ed students will demonstrate growth in reading. And then our Student Support Team is going to look at DESA and decreasing the overall number of students in the in-need range this year. Community events. We had our first PTC last week at the BMS Library. That went well. Started talking about Dancing with the Stars, which is taking place November 23rd. So, mark your calendars. We kicked off our school fundraiser this year, I'm sorry, our fall fundraiser this week. Last year, we raised $9,138.60. So, we're hoping to bump it up to maybe one, you know, that extra 40 cents in there if we can get it. 6th grade is also currently running their MUM fundraiser, which is always a success. And tomorrow is open house for grades 6 through 8, and that's from 6:00 to 7:00 at night. Athletics, our first games and races were last week. Doing well so far there. We have a huge cross-country team, almost 60 students running cross-country. So, that's really fun.
So many kids. Whoa.
But they're, they're doing great, and they're happy. And it's been so hot this week for them, too. So, today, they brought out the sprinkler and some freeze pops at the end, which were well-earned. Do you wanna highlight, we're having what we call Bulldog Bonanza on September 26th. We have every team competing at home that afternoon. So, volleyball, soccer, field hockey, except cross-country. They don't have a meet, but they will be practicing if you wanna come, watch them come out of the woods. So, that's exciting.
That's great.
And that's how it's going at BMS so far. Any questions?
Sounds like a great start.
It is. Great. Thank you.
So, a reminder, we're just having one principal come, but all three are submitting reports. So, for consistency's sake, you know, they all spoke, collaborated to make sure that they're representing, like, attendance data in the same way, et cetera. So, it'll be nice to have that information, you know, in all of the board packets going through because we all can read, right? As opposed to sitting here and listening to a lot of ditto what she said kind of thing. So, I think this new format will serve us well, and if not, we'll adjust it. Couple months of practice. And as I'm saying that, I'm realizing I don't have to put the school events in my report because they have it at the end of there. So, I will reserve mine for bigger-picture district-wide updates and not put the, the community events per building because you'll have them already. No need to tell you twice.
All right.
Policies. Here we are.
My favorite part.
So, KEB, you can see the changes there. I don't know if yours are in color or not, but you can see where there's-
Minor, minor, yeah. And the print, and the outlines as well.
On the online, perfect. So, you can see the highlighted areas that we, where the changes were suggested for KEB, which is Public Complaints About School Personnel, Employees, Students, or Administration. So, the two things that were added was that the complaint be confidential in the procedure outlined and that, much like we did with the library procedure, that if a complaint is not received by a board member within two weeks, the complaint will be considered resolved. So, just so that the community is aware that if, you know, you can't just verbally say, "I have this complaint. I'm uncomfortable going to that person." Well, then, we need you to put it in writing. And if it's not received in writing and we don't hear from the person, then we're gonna consider it resolved, not chase it down.
Complaints are serious. They can't just come up at market basket. Please go through the process and be professional.
That is the change. There, KED, we did not have any suggested changes that I can see. IG, I'm gonna hand this out. Because it's so difficult on the spot to word things, Jason had some suggestions after reviewing the proposed, the proposed policies in the packet around how, it doesn't change the intent of that second paragraph on IG. The flow is just more natural and clear.
Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you. Some, so, this is one of those pieces of legislation that caused us to have to adjust policy to add sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, and gender expression. And also to, from the teaching perspective, that you can certainly respond to a student's question. And obviously, in the moment, you're not gonna say to the student, "Oh, wait, I'm not gonna answer your question because I need to give, you know, two weeks' notice for..." So, if it's out of your purview, clearly, you're, you're going to suggest they go to, you know, a different person. But those were the two pieces due to recent legislation that needed to be added. So, instead of looking at the highlighted section on IG in the packet, if you refer to the paragraph in the email, that would be the language that I would suggest that we put forward.
It's a lot, it's a lot more clear.
I was reading it, like, it just, yeah.
It is much clearer, yeah.
Oh, it goes, you edit things and they'll just, I mean-
Yes. Your Policy Committee comrades appreciate the input because sometimes we get stuck in policy and legislation and-
Sometimes we get stuck with shall and will.
I'm seeing a wise comment from one of them.
Sometimes you gotta really help us out.
I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then lastly, you have the whole list of policies that Katie described in very detailed manner at the last meeting, at the August meeting, sorry. And we did bring them back to policy, other than putting her name in and the district's name in and formatting. And also because legally, this situation really has not flushed itself out statewide yet, that we would recommend that we continue to stay with the recommended policies from the legal team who wrote them. And you, as a board, still are not in a position where you have to have a vote or make a decision whether you're going to follow federal or state law at this point because we don't have, we don't have, we don't have a student in that situation currently. That may change when winter sports come along. We'll see when that comes, and I would hope that the state will have flushed this out a little more clearly by then. But that's just me being optimistic and hopeful.
The courts seem to be leaning in a certain direction.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. So, for now, it's important that we have them because they're federal law, and we need to have federal requirements in place in order for me to continue to feel comfortable and not be misrepresenting myself or the district or our board chair, Ms. Taylor, when we accept our grant funding every single month and pay out those. So, it's just a minor, you know, multimillion-dollar error that could occur. So, those are just back having come to the board, having gone back to policy and being further vetted and back on the table today so that they would, these would technically be for a second read because you saw them the first time at the August meeting. That way, they can officially all go forward.
Okay. Do you guys want me to do the rattling?
I make a motion to approve the following policies for first read, KEB, KED, and IG. And then for second read, AC, ACA, A, A, ACA, A, R1, ACA, A, A, R2, ACA, B, ACA, B, R1, ACA, B, R2, and JIE.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public comment. Republican, public. Anyone online? Raise your hand. All right. I entertain a motion to go to non-public.
I make a motion to enter non-public citing RSA 91-A, colon, 3, comma, 2, C.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Yes. See, I already, I told you it was gonna be a-
Yeah, second.
Any discussion?
I said that. You are the way at the end.
All those in favor? Oh, we have to do this by roll call, sorry.
Jason Baker, aye.
Carrie Neal, aye.
Laura Taylor, aye. Now, thank you all.